We're starting the Heritage and Arts meeting for February 25. I take the attendance.
I'll call the roll. Chair Gupta.
Here.
Vice Chair Edomad.
Here.
Commissioner Fong.
Here.
Commissioner Feibusch.
Here.
Commissioner De Muhica. Commissioner Farren.
Here.
Commissioner Nogez.
Here.
Any oral communications?
Seeing none.
Okay, I'm gonna give my, I'm gonna give my, is this on? I'm gonna give my chair report, which is fairly brief. I just want to mention, we did get a, an inquiry about a artist, Howard Lazar, who had created a bust, a historical bust sculpture for the Railroad Museum. And I discussed it briefly with Vice Chair Edomad. And while we are, you know, like the work, he makes these historical busts. They are, because they are sculptures, they are probably not appropriate for the gallery inside. And I don't think they're weatherproofed either. And so they cannot be exhibited outdoors. So I'm afraid that is not going to be an appropriate exhibit for us at this time.
I talked with her, and I told her that we cannot handle any sculptures for a show. But if they are okay for the outside, maybe we can do something. I thought if they can do a bronze, it can always be on a stand. It can be an outside. It is all about goats.
Oh, that's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah, it is, they used to have goats on, near the Tiburon.
I will also say that, you know, we are still at the beginning of the 2025 year. And we do not yet have a larger project for our public art, temporary public art program. And I've been thinking about that. And I think in the next month, before the next meeting, we should all think about possible projects. And I'd like to put that on next month's agenda for a discussion. We will probably be touching upon this a little bit, at least when we discuss the budget here today. And with that, I would also like to approve the minutes, January's meeting, and move on to the action items.
Are you making a motion to approve the minutes from the January meeting?
I am indeed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Artists exhibitions, um, do we have anything that we can show for the artists exhibitions? This is the-
The Cedars.
Cedars project, which-
Yeah.
Commissioner Fong has brought to our attention. And I don't know if all of you have had a chance, an opportunity to look, to look at the website and the work. This would be, I think-
For a, they would-
Part of the, yeah, the-
For the lower-
The lower gallery, a possible, a possible show for the lower gallery. And right now, we only have one slated for the next two-month period, March and April, which is the Marin City Arts and Culture Center. So this would probably have to happen either in the summer or the fall. But let's take a look and see, these are seniors. Commissioner Fong, do you want to give a little background on this?
Actually, Cedars is organization that service people with disabilities, developmental disabilities. They have a vast array of activities for them. And they are very well-known with doing weaving, which is a project, as well as art projects. And they actually have a gallery. They have, they also show their work at the Samerfell Art Gallery, part of. And I just thought this would be a very good time to kind of show the different kinds of artists that we have in our community as our emerging lower gallery concept. And it was very nice, Marissa was there, I met with the marketing person. And the good part is, they actually have a curator, who happened to be in Nepal at that time. So we're hoping to meet with her maybe in a month or so. They would like to have it in October. And I was thinking, since it's toward the end of the year, and we're not really filling up the lower gallery yet, we could just let them have, have it till the end of the year, if they want to. But they would like to have it in October. And they are very excited about the reception. They have the marketing person and a curator. And they said they would be happy to, a lot of the artists would be coming. And I think it'd be nice for us to meet people of different abilities.
I agree, I just want to ask one question. The, the, they're saying the show would begin in October.
I know, it's a little off the calendar.
I know that they have some exhibitions slated this year. So it's probably going along their schedule. That would mean that we would have Marin City from March to April. Then another show from-
May to-
May through June, or-
July.
Possibly July. And then another one-
July to October.
To October. So we'd have one, two, three, and then ending with the Cedars.
Cedars, if that's, it's-
What is their purpose of having a show in Tiburon Town Hall?
What do you mean by purpose? We contacted them.
I went through all the website. And they're disabled artists. They have a gallery, they want to sell their work. But coming, showing here, I don't think they will sell. It is not a selling place for artists.
But we're not here to, our purpose is not to sell art.
Yeah, maybe we could have two groups together, so that there would be more interest. So for the whole two months.
I think Commissioner Fong's point is that, as a community of disabled artists, they are in that group of underrepresented artists.
Good to show them.
And I think it's nice, because they have a variety, they-
Expecting to sell work, I don't think it would get sold.
They might sell some.
I don't think so. Nothing has been sold this recently.
I'm sorry. Yeah, it's exposure.
It's exposure, and it's for the purpose, what we're trying to do for the lower gallery, for this first year. I think we could evaluate, in terms of value, getting money, or what we want to do in the future. But I think this year, I believe, and I support the chair's, you know, purpose of dedicating this lower gallery to underrepresented, emerging, and a more different-
Diverse group.
Diverse group.
Do they have, Commissioner Fong, you said they have a curator. And I'm assuming that their gallery has been around for a while. So they must have their own marketing-
The marketing director is here, to me. And they, they said they'll do their own art cards, and, you know, the whole works. They, they have a whole system going. And I think it'd be good for the community, for us to meet some of the artists. They said they'll be here.
That would be nice, in the reception.
It is good. I specified, I would like to have a variety besides, you know, painting. They have weaving, they have some sculpture, and some, you know, little 3Ds framed up. I've seen some pictures of it.
The three-dimensional works and mixed media can be hung on the wall?
Yeah, that's what they said. I'll talk to the curator, and we could be more specific. But I thought that would be a nice change.
I think you're convincing me.
Yes, well, if not.
No, I, I'm not against it. It's just that if they're expecting this place is for selling art and making money for them, because they talk about 50% of whatever they're sold goes to the artist and all that. This is what I read in their website.
It seems like they are pretty well organized.
That is good.
Having a curator that knows about, they have a weaving director and a marketing director. I'm counting on them to showcase their work and to show us.
Fantastic, very good, okay.
In looking at, online, they have a timeline. I mean, this seems to be a very well-established, very well-respected organization. I don't think they're looking at us for money at all. It says that they've been, in 2017, they got a 250-
Could you talk on-
Oh, sorry.
Because we can't hear you.
In 2017, they got a grant of $250,000. They've been around for 100 years. In 2018, they were named as the San Anselmo Business of the Year. And in 2019, they celebrated their 100 years. I do agree very strongly with the idea of making this lower space a space for underrepresented communities. And disabled persons, whether they be young people or elderly people, are still, I believe, an underrepresented community, that actually have a lot to offer. I know that there is a similar program, not exactly similar, but in the East Bay, where disabled people do art. And some of it is incredibly beautiful, and they are so talented. And they, if I'm not mistaken, actually show their art in MoMA, in the city. So I think this is a wonderful opportunity to do this.
Absolutely, and I do know about the Cedars for many years. And I just wish I could be more supportive. But I think it's a very positive addition to our community. So at least I would like to give it a try, if the commission supports it.
So it would run for three months? It would run for three months, then October, November, and then, I guess-
If it's easier for the- December is half gone, I mean, it's closed.
Yeah, up to you guys, yeah.
All right, well, I, I move to that we approve this group to show in the lower gallery in, at the last, at the end of the year, in October.
I second it.
November, December?
It's actually half, December is like half, the town closes and all. But that would be great, if it's convenient for the town, and if it's okay for the little juxtaposition of gallery dates for the commission.
We can stagger it, we can adjust accordingly.
And we need to give time for the, for Dave Gotts to put his yearly show here. Maybe we can do it January, February.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah, we have to keep them into our consideration.
It seemed to have a really good response this year in January, and they had that reception.
Yes, it was, it was very good.
Very well-attended.
He will, he will be happy to do that.
I think there was a second, right?
There's a motion and a second?
Yes, I second. Roll call. Commissioner Nogez.
Yes.
Commissioner Farren. Vice Chair Edomad.
Yes.
Commissioner Fong.
Yes.
Commissioner Feibusch.
Yes.
Unanimous. The art show will, we will offer them the lower gallery for October, November, and December.
So will, will you be in charge of all the-
I will be the liaison, I will work with Marissa. And we, I would definitely report back to you. And I would hope to let you know how, how it goes with the curator.
Great.
Sounds good, thank you. Action item number two, Chair Gupta.
Action item number two is the Artist Laureate Wall. Review expenses involved in the creation of the Artist Laureate Wall and consider approval to move forward with the installation of signage and lighting. There a staff report or something?
There's a staff report on this.
Great.
Oh, that's good.
All right, the background of the Heritage and Arts Artist Laureate Wall is, the commission proposes dedicating a second-floor wall at Town Hall to display artwork from past artist laureates. And an ad hoc committee consisting of Vice Chair Edomad, Commissioners Fong and Feibusch, met with staff on January 22 to plan the installation, which requires new signage, and track lighting to match existing features. Estimated cost per Davis Sign Company and DC Electric signage would be about $350, consisting of a vinyl, you know, title across the top. Track lighting, which would, we'd try to match what is already in the gallery. The quote we received from DC Electric was approximately $10,000. I will be asking for a second quote from another electrician. The town manager has offered to contribute $5,000 of town funds towards this. And then I put in $200 for miscellaneous installation accessories. I will be asking for two additional quotes, and we'll endeavor to keep the costs as low as possible. The recommendation is to approve $5,550 from the general fund for the Artist Laureate Exhibit Installation. The current general fund balance is $6,212.67. The proposed expense would leave $662.77, which would re, the budget would be re-approved for July 1. The fiscal year starts July 1. I will give you a little bit of background in your special project fund, which is where the artist donations go into, when the artists sell artwork here. That currently has a balance of $7,616.61. As of July 1, 2024, $30.80 in interest has been earned on those funds. $1,603.75 in donations and art sales have been received, and nothing has been, nothing has been spent. So therefore, today, as of today, the current balance is $9,251.16. This fund was established to help the commission do, support their projects. So you have the opportunity to approve this expense, either out of the general fund or out of the special projects fund. Additionally, I talked to Dave about upcoming banner expenses. And it looks like we have about $1,200 in banner expenses for the year for the Ultimate Hillary's concerts and the artist receptions. So another option could be to take the banner expenses out of the special project fund, and then approve the lighting out of the general fund.
I have a question. You know, we got, the, the lighting in the gallery was done around- Could you talk on the microphone?
10 years ago.
10 years ago.
And I, yeah, I was the one in charge. And there was a very good electrician that is known in town, John Blight, that, you know, he charged $6,000 for the whole-
I did call him last week, and he is going to come by this week and take a look, and give us another quote.
Because he did that, the gallery. And I, another thing I wanted to ask is that, are you also considering putting light where the big wall is?
Yes, that space has been included in the quote from DC Electric.
That's very important, yeah.
Yeah, so we are still working on quotes. So I think, you know, maybe the, the action is to approve a not-to-exceed number, and then hopefully we don't actually come close to it.
I think John Blight, because he did the other one, probably would be more inclined to give a reasonable sort of estimate.
Yes, we spoke last week.
Would do the whole thing, yeah.
Question?
Yes.
Donated services, is that?
I have two questions. Number one, is a donated service, like somebody like that, that donates their services, is that considered a charitable deduction, donation?
I don't know the answer to that, but I can research it and find out.
It'll come up again for other things. And the second question was, which is the budget that we have to spend? Or we kind of lose it?
That's the general fund.
Okay, good. So I think we should make sure we don't lose it.
My, my feeling is that since there is, you know, certainly if we did a not-to-exceed for the total, $6,000, that would be covered by the general fund. And we do have the special projects fund as well.
Yeah, if it's around $6,000, it would be perfect.
Yeah, so I think that, that seems pretty reasonable.
That means you just, you just add $1,000 to what the, you know, man, the town manager has agreed to pay.
I mean, ideally, if we do get a better quote, maybe the, the town manager would agree to splitting that with us also in some way. Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if he's willing to spend $5,000, and we can lower the overall cost not to exceed $6,000, then maybe we do three and three.
Even better.
Yeah, I think he would be very pleased with that. He, he did say he would, he would take, he would offer 50% of the cost not to exceed $5,000, so.
Well, that's good.
Well, then I would move to approve the recommendation of the staff with a proviso, proviso, that the project cost $6,000 overall, or at least not to exceed $6,000 overall.
To, to, to be borne by the commission.
Right.
Second.
To clarify, is that the general fund that you'd like to use for that expense?
Yes.
I do have a question regarding the banners. It has always come out, the general fund. And are you saying $1,200 for this year?
For the year?
Till the June, or is it for next year? I just need clarification in my head.
Absolutely. The, the $1,240 approximately in banner cost is for the calendar year.
Oh, for the calendar year?
Yeah, so your special, it could come out of your special fund, because that doesn't coincide with the fiscal year of the town budget.
So it covers the downstairs and the upstairs shows?
That's correct.
That's, that's how many banners, approximately?
I will have to look that up. But Dave gave me a quote of $6.50, and he's been spending approximately $60 per banner. Yeah, and then we had a couple of rush banners this week because of the art gallery. We had a rush, so that sometimes we spend a little bit more than.
Well, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have any seconds?
I second.
All right, roll call. Commissioner Nogez. Oh, she did the motion, I'm sorry. Commissioner Farren.
Yes.
Chair Gupta.
Yes.
Vice Chair Edomad.
Yes.
Commissioner Fong. Commissioner Feibusch.
Yes.
All right, unanimous.
Okay, moving on to action item three. Upcoming expenses, review and consider approval of expenditures for adding signage to the Town Hall lobby windows. Review and consider approval of expenditures for custom name tags for Commissioners and Staff Liaison.
All right, I will read the board report.
I didn't think that would cost much.
It doesn't. The Heritage and Arts Commission requested an estimate of the expense to add signage in the Town Hall lobby to advertise the hours of the art gallery and exhibitions. A design matching the existing window lettering has been approved by the town manager. That's on the opposite pane, on the other side of the front door. The estimated cost for this would not exceed $220 to install vinyl lettering on the front window opposite the existing Town Hall hours signage. The second item, there's a request to update our name tags for public events with the addition of Commissioner Feibusch and Staff Liaison Miller. After looking into options, we found that permanent magnetic magnets, magnetic name tags would be nearly as affordable as paper name tags in plastic sleeves, while looking much more professional, professional. Eight custom magnetic name tags would be approximately $150. The signage would not exceed $220. So the recommendation is to approve these expenses from the general fund.
Do we have enough money in the general fund?
Just for that, we are spending a lot of money, you know, what happens with the artist laureates, I think.
Yes, after the approval of the lighting project, there, there is approximately-
$800 or $900 or something?
$800.
I, I had to update some numbers after Dave's invoices came in, $662.77.
All right.
Okay.
How was that?
I, I think it's great. I was the one that suggested, I think it's very balanced, and Greg Channis agreed to it. And Marissa was right there. We were just very lucky to have that. And I think it, it would help, because when I come in, and I like to see the art, all I see is a Town Hall, and then all of a sudden, the Town Hall is closed. People don't really get that idea, so we could have a notice, that would be great. And it's so inexpensive.
It is.
Great idea.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
It's costing more than-
Yeah, I would move to, may I make the motion? I would like to move to, for the commission to accept these expenses and make the improvements for the-
Roll call, Commissioner De Muhica.
Yes.
Commissioner Feibusch.
Yes.
Vice Chair Edomad.
Yes.
Chair Gupta.
Yes.
Commissioner Farren.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed.
Yay. So now we have $500 left.
And now we come to the fiscal year 2026 budget planning.
The Town Council annually allocates $7,500 in general fund for discretionary use by the Heritage and Arts Commission. These funds will support operational needs, including promotional banners, reception supplies and refreshments, and additional operational requirements throughout the year. The fund corresponds with the Town of Tiburon's fiscal year, July 1 of the current year, to June 30 of the following year. As of February 20, 2025, there is $6,212.67 after Dave Gotts' recent invoice. The Public Art Fund contains resources designated for public art exhibitions and opportunities to benefit the town. As of February 2025, the current fund balance is $54,432.86, which comprises the initial Town Council grant of $50,000, private donations, and accrued interest. All expenditures from this fund require Town Council budget amendment approval. Private donations specifically designated for public art will be deposited into this fund. Finally, the Heritage and Arts Project Fund was established to manage funding and expenditures associated with Heritage and Arts projects, as documented in the fiscal year 2022 audit. This fund receives commission fees from art exhibition sales and donations designated for the Heritage and Arts Commission and accrues interests. As of February 2025, the current fund balance is $9,251.16. A corresponding budget line item will be established for fiscal year 2026, granting the commission discretionary authority over these funds that were generated through their artist promotion and exhibition efforts. Staff recommendation, create a budget ad hoc committee to create and maintain a budget for fiscal year 2026, which begins July 1, 2025, to assist the commission in planning small and large-scale public art projects and events that align with the mission of the Heritage and Arts Commission. The Budget Ad Hoc Committee will prepare a report to be presented at a future meeting before the start of 2026, fiscal year 2026.
Okay, Chair. I'm in the mood for spending, and also asking for money. I wonder if we could, I mean, it's honest, asking the general fund be increased to $10,000. Wines are costing more, we're getting a lot more attendance, and we're using a lot more money for banners, which is important. And I just think we could ask.
I think that that should be a topic for the Budget Ad Hoc Committee to come up with a- I think that that should be a topic for the budget ad hoc committee to come up with a proposal for the town council because the, the town manager is preparing budget now, so this is a good time to maybe discuss it at the March meeting.
For the public art fund, I'd like to thank the town for doing good investment. That's a pretty good interest rate.
Great interest.
For not doing anything. And for the nine thousand, I think, um, we could keep it for use because I, I'm seeing that there might be more programs. For instance, like the dance program, that might cost a little bit, you know, more than our regular general fund. And I, I just think, um, that's good, keeping it discretionary usage. But that's, that's my comment.
I agree with your comments. I think, uh, let's get a ad hoc together and let's get going because, you know, we're at the beginning of the year still, sort of.
Yeah, it's a good time to ask the manager.
And, uh, it would be wonderful to begin planning and looking at projects and costs.
You think we need more than ten?
I think, I think that's okay probably.
Okay.
Because the public art project fund is doing well and that's really.
It's like asking for allowance for my mirrors.
So I, 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 uh, do you want to motion for increasing?
I think.
I think Victoria is a good.
My question is, in terms of the public art fund, is that fifty thousand dollars then invested in some particular vehicle to generate interest?
Yes, I think that's with the town.
The town, the town is invested.
Yeah, they have really good investments.
Sure, they do that, yeah.
I just wanted.
Yeah, so it sits with the town.
I mean, I think that perhaps, at least in the interim, maybe for this next fiscal year, we could consider it, you know, sort of our, um, I've, the word is escaping me, but, but our capital fund, right? That we just invest and have generate interest and not really tap it, at least not now.
I mean, if we can, if we can get away with not tapping it for this fiscal, till the end of the fiscal year, that'd be great. But I think we need to look forward to a large project that I'd like to see in the fall at least, where we would draw from that fund, we'd have to probably draw from that fund at some.
Right, yeah, and, and I think that's wise because as you said, we haven't really had a major project that we have put forward. And that's what we need to do. I know that I've gotten a lot of feedback from people that I know that attended the concert outdoors and were asking, when are we going to do that again? So I think there is definitely a, an appetite for outdoor art, whether it be poetry, music.
Yeah, different performances.
Performance art, yeah.
Interactive art, it could also, you know, different things.
But something like Censorio.
You find it and bring it and we will.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, yeah, so we're still talking to.
Very good idea.
The artists.
Bruce.
Bruce Palmer?
Bruce Monroe?
Monroe for Censorio. If you haven't been, I encourage you to go.
There's Bruce Monroe and then, and then there was also an artist that, um, Victoria Miller had brought to our attention early on. He designed the Start Art pins and he's a, he's a very interesting Los Angeles-based artist who does, uh, really interesting signs, signage. And, uh, they're, they're meant to kind of provoke, um, you know, different reactions and, and they're very thought-provoking. They, sometimes they're one or two words, but he also has a, a range of other sculptural works as well. Scott Froshauer and, um, you know, but we can, we can, we can all, you know, kind of pull together our ideas and maybe at the next meeting, we can start looking at some of these potential projects and potential artists for.
I will, I can, uh, help you start talking with him.
Sure.
And find out what he can actually suggest.
I think right from the start, he, yeah, he's very, he's well-known.
He's very well-known.
And it's, I guess, what I've learned is called communicative art. So you, and I think they did it up at, um, uh, what is it? Up at Sonoma somewhere.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and also at, uh, at MoMA. And I think that might be a nice intro for the, for people to participate and maybe could tie in with some performance, which I, I would love to. I, I think that might be something good to, and we could sell our pins there.
Yes.
I'm afraid we're getting a little off topic. I'm gonna rein it back into this current action item.
Budget ad hoc.
So we're gonna create a budget ad hoc, well, I think there's two, two motions here potentially. One is to ask to increase the amount to ten thousand.
I'm gonna recommend that the budget ad hoc comes to next meeting with that proposal.
Right.
Okay, that sounds good.
Agreed.
Well, I'd love for, uh, I'd like to be on the ad hoc and Commissioner Fong.
And Fong.
And maybe.
Anyone else?
Maybe, maybe Nogez, Commissioner Nogez.
Yes?
Trish?
Okay, that's good, that's good.
I moved, I moved to, uh, form an ad hoc committee for budget planning for the next fiscal year with, uh, myself, Chair Gupta, with Commissioner Fong and Commissioner Farron.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and I'll roll call. Commissioner Muhica?
Yes.
Commissioner Feibusch?
Yes.
Commissioner Fong? Vice Chair Edamad?
Yes.
I'm sorry, my, I had too much caffeine today. Um, Commissioner Farron?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous, it's passed.
And now, we are going on to our discussion items. We're gonna review this document that everyone has, the, um, gallery procedures document. This is the document that we will be working off of for town hall exhibitions, both the upper and lower galleries. Um, and we just want to review it today and make sure that, you know, since we have, um, commissioners who are, uh, working with specific artists. I believe, uh, Commissioner Muhica Beavers is working with Cecily Starren next. The upper gallery, Commissioner Fong is working with Yueeng Zhang, uh, Commissioner Edamad with Kathy Gray, et cetera, et cetera. We need to make sure that, ensure that, that we, we follow these, these procedures and really kind of pay attention to dates and milestones and sign-offs, especially with things like.
That's jealous.
Artist contract.
Jolly pushing.
Especially with the artist contract and with banners. So, uh, as everyone, can everyone take a look at this for a minute here and see if we are missing anything? If we are, we can certainly add.
This is the second time you're looking at it.
But I think this is, I, I just want to reiterate that this is an important document.
It's really important.
Yeah, no, we do it.
And that now we all have a copy and, um, you know, I, I know that, um, you know, these, these shows come up very fast. So it's really important that we work with our own individual calendars as well and pencil these things in. That's all I wanted to mention.
Is it possible to request art, like the banner art size for like social media? So if we want to share with our networks, okay.
It is.
I would add that.
And in fact, oh, you add it to the, add it to the document, that's a good idea.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And that is usually, whatever is the design for the banner is, becomes the JPEG or the, the image file that you can then post to social media as well.
I've been creating graphics for each of the artists' receptions that we put in the Tiburon Talk newsletter and also on the town's Instagram. And when I, and I just did Cecily's and the Marin City Arts Center, um, today. So I will forward those to you guys so you have them, but I also encourage you to, um, share from the Town of Tiburon Instagram because that's great for us.
I think consistency is a good idea and I thank you, Marissa, for taking the design role on, on, by yourself. The images clearly have to be solicited by the, the, uh, commissioners who are working with the artists. That's our responsibility to get the right image. And then, you know, I think it's great that Marissa has got a, a system down and, uh, we can be across all channels consistent.
And the timing is very important.
Dave needs at least three weeks to create a banner and in order to use that highly discounted banner service. So, um, to get that information to him, at least three, well, three weeks before the, um, banner goes up. And the dates are on the updated calendar.
Maybe we could put the dates on our.
They are on the calendar, under the banner hanging date. You can see, it's there.
You know, what date should go to the banner and what date should go to, uh.
Dave Gott.
Does they go for banner and Diana Smith for the article?
What I'm saying is that.
She wants time.
But Dave Gott needs three weeks ahead of lead time to be able.
Ahead of time, yes.
So you can work, you can work backwards also from this hang banner date that's on here.
Yeah. I think Marissa has done a really fantastic job with.
Support.
These dates and everything.
Yes.
And the time.
So organized.
Important, yeah.
All right, moving on to discussion item number two, the Artist Laureate Ad hoc Committee update.
Oh, I, I still have a question about the gallery procedures.
Yep.
One of the things that I think is really important that I don't see here, but correct me if I'm wrong, is the invitations. Because up till now, it has been the artist's responsibility to promote their show, which includes sending out invitations. I don't know that that's always clear and I think it's important to, to clarify that in this document because they would also need whatever artwork Marissa produces to be able to prepare their own cards, which you can do easily now at any copy place, but you've got to have the art in a, in a particular format for, you know, wherever you go.
So you, I, I, yeah, I'm looking under publicity here. You're saying in the last item there, artists can also do contacts, it should be artists should also do.
Artist is responsible for sending out invitations.
Invitations.
Yeah, they usually do, uh, but I think it's better to spell it out.
I think so.
No question.
Okay.
It's good to be.
I can, I can, I can revise this and then.
I, I have a question. You know, in the past, also the town would send invitation or would say that there is the opening of the show to a list of the emails that there was in, in, in town hall. I don't know if you're still doing that.
It does show up in Tiburon Talk.
Do we still do it?
Yeah.
Apart from Tiburon Talk?
Yes, it's in, uh, the Tiburon Talk that goes out the week of the, uh, the event. Yeah, the Tiburon Talk is, uh, distributed to about forty-seven hundred, um, email addresses and it goes out the week of the town council meeting, which is every other week. So you'll, you can see it on Mon, the Monday of the town council week.
Okay, thank you.
And then last but not least, in terms of opening reception, I, I take it that all of these, uh, bullet points are things that we have to do because the one that I wanted to know about was exhibition. Stop by and check lights being turned on daily and that no heavy objects are set too close to the artwork. Who's doing that?
Well, they, they usually have meetings in, in the same gallery room. Actually, last week, I was just checking out and there was some kind of a game was going on and the tables were too close to the artwork. There was enough space in the center to have the chairs away from, from the artwork.
Commissioner Edamad and I are, you know, sort of not regularly, but infrequently coming in and checking it out.
I frequently come. Whenever I go for a walk, I always stop here and go out.
Okay, so, so because also stopping by and checking lights, I would imagine lights are the lights in the gallery upstairs?
Yeah, they always do that.
Possibly here?
First thing, they always open the doors.
Open the doors and turn the.
And they put on the lights, but it is the meetings that happen there. And then when the meeting is over, they should really take, move the chairs and move the, uh, tables from the.
I mean, the, 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 the hope is that with the signage, with more, um, you know, uh, publicity for some of these events that we have this year, that there will be more traffic to these galleries. And, um, you know, I think we can, we can, uh.
We had one, um, I think it was Ginny Doyle. Uh, wanted to bring some buyers, some friends to show some of her work and she couldn't get into the gallery because there was a meeting and the door was closed. So is there a way of, um, asking the artist if you want to come in the middle of the week to show it to somebody, to call ahead and make sure that the room, there is no meetings in it?
Absolutely. They can call me and I can check the calendar and let them know when it's occupied or not.
And part of the signage for the hours upfront is also, you know, change from season to season depending on when the ranch is using the space. And to follow up on your moving the chairs, is there any way to notify the ranch when you, they sign up? Thanks.
So I guess what I'm leading up to is in terms of the opening reception because there is essentially a person from the commission that is dealing or assigned to each artist that maybe the primary responsibility falls on that person. To make sure that, for instance, check on supplies, um, make sure that you have enough commissioners showing up to help set up.
Yeah.
So that it isn't just hit or miss, that it's rather, that that person is responsible for making sure that all this happens. Of course, we all should help, but there has to be a point person.
We'll call them the point, I'm gonna put it in the document, but we'll call them the point person.
The point person, okay.
And I was thinking personally, when I use this list, I would probably put the name of the artist and Marissa's number and, you know, keep on touching base and this is, you know, the one piece of paper for that artist, for that show and what I have to do. So I think it's very helpful.
I used to get emails and phone calls almost every day asking questions about these things, so.
Okay, well, we're, we're getting there.
I get several a day.
I'm sure Marissa's fielding a lot of questions herself.
Could be added to the, uh, to the thing that they sign, uh, to, uh, for the artists, one of.
We could certainly draft something that takes from this sheet for artists' responsibilities or something like that as well.
I actually found something that I think Patty had done in twenty nineteen or something that was kind of a, an application that had, this is your hanging date, this is your reception date, here's your point person. And I can send that to, to you guys. And I think it looked pretty good to me and if you want to, we can put that into.
Since you're handling the contract.
Why did you send it? And if we need to add something like about banners and stuff like that or banner art or something, we can add that to it.
Okay, that sounds good. I'll send it to the commission and we can, um, add it as a discussion item at the next agenda.
Yeah, no, I think that's great because the idea would be not to have everybody deluge you with minutia.
Yeah.
But rather have a point person who can answer all the questions and then if need be, you be the contact or the liaison with. The commissioner would talk to Marissa instead of everybody else talking to Marissa.
It might be good to go through the year calendar for shows and see if every, every artist has got a person taking care of them.
We do right now, we do right now.
Even for the downstairs gallery?
For the downstairs, right now we have one, uh, Marin City Arts and then now as, with October, with Victoria, uh, with Commissioner Fong. Uh, so really, just FYI, I am up for the lower gallery with Marin City Arts and Commissioner Muhica Beavers with Cecily Starren. So we are the guinea pigs.
Yes.
For this process, for, for gallery management coming out.
For, for Cecily?
You are Cecily's point person and I am for Ochala Marcus and Marin City. So let's, you know, let's see what.
Yeah, if everybody knows.
And we're pretty much there at this point. She knows her hang date and Ochala knows her hang date and, uh, reception date. So those things are there, but we are still, uh, responsible to, uh, organize that. And, um, with that, I mean, we have a, a hang date, I, I don't want to get off topic here. But since we are on gallery procedures document right now, um, we have a March second and a March third hang date. I think, I think, uh, the hang date for Marin City Arts is now changed, I believe, to the fourth, I think. to the 4th, I think. And I will, I will follow up with Ms. Marcus about that.
So the opening night for both artists is the same time?
No, we tried to be different.
No, the receptions are different. The receptions are different, but the opening nights, I think.
Is one week before the opening.
Your, your reception is March 4th, the Marin City, the downstairs gallery.
So a week later, yeah.
Week later, eleven.
Thank you.
Because it's a very big reception for the downstairs artists.
Okay. Question, Chair. I have a question regarding the removal date, because it seems like, you know, April 30th and then it's May 1st. It seems a little tight. I don't know how, how it's done.
Well, what I, what I did was I explained to the artist and asked them to choose a day in that week.
In the week, yeah.
So that the next person can come and for the one, for Commissioner Moika's artist.
Cecily.
Cecily, she has accepted to do it, to hang it on Monday and be ready for the Tuesday, for the next day, for the reception. So it is up to.
And I believe she's also dropping off most of her art tomorrow, and we're storing it in a closet upstairs, because that's when her husband is available. So if you're around tomorrow, I can.
Sure.
Yeah. I'll, I'll let, I'll send you an email and let you know what time she's decided to come.
All right, that's good.
And feel free to reach out to me also if you need help with the hanging.
Okay.
She's hired a hanger. She has, she has a professional hanger coming.
There you go.
No, she's, she's a pro, she's, she's quite a professional, yeah.
That's why I'm scared of somebody knocking artwork with their chair.
Okay, let's move on to discussion item number two, the Artist Laureate Ad Hoc Committee Update. Do we have an update?
Well, the update is that we asked for a time to get together.
Yes.
Once you have, our liaison has got certain amount.
We had a tentative date set for interviews. Unfortunately, not everyone could make it at that time.
Yeah.
So now we are looking again to see when everyone can come on the same day. There are three artists, potential Artist Laureate applicants, so it's getting, it's a little tricky to get the logistics, but I think we can, we can do it.
Yes, I have asked Leah Delena and Marissa for the month of March to see if you can make a date. We have to give everybody, because there are six people, and they need to know ahead of time.
Yes, I have, I reached out to the mayor, I believe, last week, and, or maybe it was just before that, when you were still planning to travel, you were going to be gone. And she said she would, she would like to have, to make a decision closer to March. At the time, it was the middle of February, and it was, so we'll reach back, I'll reach back out to her and try to, I'll get, try to get a couple of options that then I can send to you for the group.
Would be great.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
And I'll reach out to you with my.
Yes.
My calendar dates, because I am going to be away for a week in March as well.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
Is it possible to find out who the three applicants are? I asked the same question last month. I'm just curious.
The applicants, as long as we give them some time, they will be ready to come.
No, I was just thinking the names, who are they? Who are the applicants at this point?
You had, you had an email with all their.
I haven't received it. I don't.
Okay, thanks, I'll check.
I'll check on the email.
I can circulate it again if you need to be.
Yeah, you have to know, yeah.
Moving on, discussion item number three, Emerging Artists Outreach Update. I'll, I'll, I'll speak to that a little bit. We now have slated, as of today, we have two groups. Marissa brought to my attention a recent exhibit at the Marin Center, in the gallery at the Marin Center of Native American artists, and that looked really amazing. And my hope is that we will be able to get that group in. The curator is a well-known artist herself, and you can go to the Marin Center website and see some of the work that they had up, up until recently, January, I believe January 25th was the last date of that exhibition, but it is there still on their website. And I encourage every, all the commissioners to check it out. I would love to have that. And, and that would mean two more openings, you know, no, two, because we have March through April, and then we have May through June, and then July, July, August, right? So that's, well, let's see, March through, May through June, July, August, and then the one before Cedars. Yeah, so there's three altogether.
Since they had their work shown there, probably they would be very glad to.
Yeah, that would be great.
As soon as possible.
That's right, it's already curated.
So if you want to give me, if you want to call them, if you don't have the time, give me the.
You're interested in helping?
Yeah.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll coordinate with Marissa on that.
Yeah.
Because I believe your friend was also worked on that or was.
Yeah, she's the cultural associate at the Marin Center, some, some kind of staff member that does the cultural programs, yeah.
Yeah, and that show is widely publicized, and it's really good quality, and I, I wouldn't mind having them, if they wanted to rotate, use up the whole three months or whatever, four months, like double show.
Double show. Double show, okay, well, we can talk about that.
Double feature.
Double feature, feature, double feature, okay.
I suggest.
That is the Emerging Artists Outreach Update. There are a couple of other groups that I had identified earlier, at the end of last year, when we first came up with this idea, and I'll be circling back to those as well and keep you posted. Discussion item number four, the Local Collaboration Ad Hoc Committee Update.
We have not had a chance to meet, so I would suggest that at the end of this meeting, we get a date on calendar.
Okay, and, okay, that sounds good.
Could I just say, I think in the past, Tiburon had a film festival, I don't know what happened to it.
Yeah.
That was before Cinelounge?
It was this, it was by this gentleman.
I know we were thinking of different things, maybe check in on it.
Yeah, I, I had that in mind, actually. No, seriously, I was thinking about it before I came here. But I don't know that we can discuss that right now, so it's not, yeah, okay. In that case, yes, I think it'd be wonderful in collaboration with Cinelounge. I know that just recently, the, there's a guy in Belvedere that did a, I forget what he called it, but it was the first short video.
The video in the park?
The video in the park, yes. So what they did is they solicited videos from people in the community, and in fact, Rotary submitted our public service announcement that we run at Cinelounge, and it was accepted as one of the movies.
Yeah.
And it was really interesting, because you had people of all different, you know, ages and backgrounds and education, and it was wonderful, because it was really a community event that brought everyone.
Yeah, and it was at the park, it was really well attended. What, to that, you just suck, pick my brain. What about if you have some kind of film festival?
Right.
Maybe have a section with, encourage nonprofits, other nonprofits, and we'll learn about them for the community. And I know, I'm still trying to be a kid, but I would love animation, you know, kids and all that.
And that's what brought me to, to follow up on that, which was, that I thought it would be wonderful to invite young people and maybe do a young persons film festival, because kids, more than anyone else, are completely in tune with AI.
That's a great idea.
And because we really don't do much in this town to involve young people.
Mm-hmm.
So if we could do that and invite the schools and young people to make, to submit their videos, and then we have an ad hoc to curate them.
Sure.
Right, and then pick some and do it at Cinelounge, I think that the owner of Cinelounge, Christian, would love it.
He would love that, yeah.
Would you like to start on that, so that we won't be just talking about?
Let's have the ad hoc meeting.
The ad hoc and, we have the same thing.
No, she's in the ad hoc, aren't you?
I am on the ad hoc, yes, yes. But that's what I'm saying, is that this is a wonderful.
Can we hear, hear something?
Yeah, this is a wonderful opportunity to get kids involved in the community and to have their work exhibited, you know, potentially at the.
Liz is great with that and the marketing, and I think it'll be really fun. And anyway, thank you, ad hoc.
So, yeah, so that would be Liz, Trish, and Nora, you guys can meet, and I think that's a cool idea, and I'm happy to help, since I have a child in school with outreach to Delmar and maybe even, you know, one of the high schools or something.
With guidelines, no exposing your family.
Yeah, oh, no, there would be, we have to, I think that's part of the ad hoc.
Why not? Get to know your community.
Everybody has signed a consent form, if you are a family member, you've signed a consent form.
This is mom yelling at me, because I won't clean up my room.
Right, right, okay, excellent. I love that idea, I think that's a really cool idea. And I think it's an easy lift, too, because you'll just get tons of stuff, you know, tons of content will come in.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you need to do all that before they break for school.
Yeah.
Set some guidelines and.
And just as a heads up, the Belvedere Homemade Film Festival is coming back again this year in October, so.
Okay, good to know.
Just so you have that on your radar.
Did not even know that, that's all right, it's great.
Yeah, it was the first annual.
Belvedere Film Festival.
Okay, Marissa, do you want to go through the, the calendar dates?
Sure. I have a question about one of them, the dairy.
Oh, the dairy mural?
Yeah. Should we be trying to go to that or?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, so the upcoming dates are Friday, February 28th, very short window of 3:30 to 4 o'clock, visit from the Portuguese FLAD delegate to the Dairy Mural. They have another event they have to go to, so it's really a quick hard stop. It would be lovely if commissioners could, you know, pop out there and greet them and say hello. Yes.
Could I add, because the last email that I got about this is that the time has been extended from three to four, so it will be a full hour.
Oh, good, okay.
Three to four.
Three to four, yes.
It is three to four.
And, and just so you know, FLAD stands for Foundation for Luso-American Development. They have a new president of that entity, and the new president is coming because he was not available to come to the groundbreaking or to the dedication ceremony.
Do you know, where, where are they based, FLAD?
Well, it's in Portugal.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, they're coming from Portugal.
From Portugal.
What's the L?
And do they have a local group here? I mean, I know the local group supported the other one.
There, there, in fact, there are members of, yeah, local members of FLAD, yes.
That's great.
And actually, what they're going to be doing is, before they come to see us, they will be going to Sausalito, because Sausalito has a mosaic, yes.
Oh, they have a mosaic.
Yeah, a mosaic there. Azulejos.
Right, right.
And they also have a sister city relationship with Cascais in Portugal. So the expert, Mike Moyle, on the immigration of the Azorian, Portuguese Azorian immigrants to this community, to the US, I guess, will be giving them a walking tour in Sausalito prior to their coming here, and then after coming here, they're going to go to a reception in the city, which is why they have such a tight schedule.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So three to four?
Three to four, yes, and as far as I know, the mayor will be there, different people from the organizations that gave to, but it is a public event, so anyone can come, and of course, all of the commissioners.
It starts at three?
Starts at three, yeah, yeah.
Will, will they be providing wines?
No.
I apologize for my.
Unfortunately, there is not sufficient time for a reception, but we would just like to be able to receive them with as much.
To give them support and welcome, I think it's very appropriate.
And welcome and appreciation, and we would show up as essentially, we're responsible for that, right? That's our project.
Yeah.
So a, a good representation would be welcome.
Okay.
The next item is on Tuesday, March 4th, at 6 o'clock, is of course, the Cecily Starin Artist Reception. It's recommended that guys get here a little early to help set up, and I'll make sure I've got wines in the fridge for you. Tuesday, March 11th, from 6 to 8, is the Marin City Arts and Cultural Center Artist Reception. Again, show up early and help set up. And then Thursday, pardon the typo, Thursday, March 25th, at 5:30, is the next regular meeting of the Heritage and Arts Commission. We have upcoming concerts at Old St. Hillary's, Sunday, March 23rd, 4 o'clock, John Arbor and Mads Toling. Mads Toling is an amazing violinist, so, side note, really, really fun. Sunday, April 13th, at 4 o'clock, is Arco Strum, and Sunday, May 4th, at, there's two shows, 1 o'clock and 4 o'clock, is the very wonderful female group musée.
May, for the Marin, for the reception, we have accepted to do, to buy food and setup.
For the Marin City, yes.
Where we really have to.
Plan ahead for that.
Yeah, plan ahead and see who is doing what.
Okay, I can, I can.
Could we just order some platters?
I think that's the way to go.
Yeah.
We discussed.
But who's going to do it, so we have to make sure.
I mean, I can do it.
You're going to order it?
Yeah.
You know how much money we are going.
We had a.
Not over $300.
Over 300, and even after our spending, I think we have about 500 left.
I think we will have, possibly, we will have enough wines, because recently I've added a box of wines and bought some.
Yes, you have plenty of wine, it's just the food.
Plenty of wine, but it is the food, and we have to set up the table.
From the Nugget?
Nuggets is, is very good, but it's expensive.
Very expensive.
The Landmark had it from Nuggets, and they had two trays, one was just sort of like chips and dips at Hellmann's, you know, the other one was very nice with some meats and nuggets.
Savory is very, it's very reasonable.
Okay, I'll check out.
Savory is pretty good, and even their.
Savory is always very good.
Even their sushi platter was quite acceptable.
Or those, or those wraps, you know?
Yeah.
And they can cut them into half, which are easier to eat. It's a lot, you know?
Yeah, Savory does a good enough job.
And, and usually you do it like, I mean, you.
A day before.
You order and then you can pick up.
I think you need to go there. I think you would need to go there. Yeah, you have to, to say that you need some cookies or something for, like a dessert.
I think I said at the last meeting when we discussed this, that I would be willing to help you, because I don't mind running, doing a run to Costco and a run to Trader Joe's, because I've done this for, here, but also for St. Stephen's, I did the Christmas, not this year, the year before.
Thank you.
I will take you up on that.
That's good, too.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Good pricing.
Yeah, Trader Joe's has excellent stuff.
Yeah, it's, then you have to set it up. If you buy it already made, then it doesn't take much.
Yeah, but I mean, for, for the future, that's an option, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, well, thank you all.
Thank you.
And with that.
Can I say one thing?
One thing, yes.
One thing, one thing, and that is this, that people should remember that we are also sponsors of the concerts at Old St. Hillary. And, and therefore, we should try not just to attend, but also help out, because Dave Gotts often needs drivers to drive people, and it's not difficult to do. The pickup is in front of Rustic Bakery before the concert, and then drive people back down from the concert, because there's no parking up there, absolutely none, so people have to either shuttle or walk. And so Dave Gotts looks to us to help with that, as well as also, and I know Azita's done this in the past, is to help out and serve wines during the intermission at the concerts at Old St. Hillary.
When is that? That is when I always.
Upcoming concerts on the calendar.
What?
March 23rd, April 13th, and May 4th.
Right, and, and the bonus is that if you help, you get to go for free.
No, I always pay.
I always pay.
Well, I'm just saying.
I pay too.
Sometimes they sell out.
All right.
They sell out.
They need the help.
I go on the 13th.
They need the help.
But contact Dave if you know now that you can help out.
Okay.
I go on the 13th.
And with that, we will adjourn.